And to the calling for which stands my nation under God, in this hall with liberty and justice. So.
Let me say something. If anybody would like to speak today, please make sure you sign in and just understand that comments will be kept to three minutes and the commissioners do have the power to control comments if they become redundant. Thank you.
All right.
Okay. Well, the first item is a public hearing for a petition to vacate a 30-foot public utility easement on lots 18 and 19 in Rin Lake number two subdivision.
Make a motion to leave the regular meeting and enter into the public hearing.
Second. First and second all in favor.
Aye.
We do have all the green cards for the notice to the adjacent property owners. This was advertised in the standard on July 31st, '25, and we have letters of non-objection from Centerpoint Energy, Spectrum, Towne O'Chandler, AT&amp;T, and Astound. So the ordinance would be in order.
Hi, Scott Beadle with Cash Wagner and Associates here on behalf of the owner. They purchased two lots in the subdivision and basically they want to build over the line where the easement's located with one house on both lots. When the subdivision was platted, they pretty well put 15-foot easements down each side of each lot in the subdivision. So this is just the internal easement to the two lots that they own. So any services that go back there would strictly be that, just a service to their individual house. So the public utility easement wouldn't be necessary.
Any member from the public would like to speak on this issue? Okay, saying none. Make a motion to close the public hearing and enter back into the regular meeting.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, I don't have any other discussion. Counsel, comments? Make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Oh, thank you.
Yes. Ordinance would be 2025-10.
Okay, so we have a motion. For ordinance 2025-10.
This motion. First and second all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Cars three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next items is a request to release surety. It's Commercial Drive 2307910144, Ward Trail by Dover Development LLC by Nick Dwyer, the Director of Development. We've been holding 5,700 in escrow guaranteeing the entrance construction and they have sent a request that the construction is complete and requesting the release of that surety.
Driveway has been constructed. Recommend release of the surety.
I'll make a motion to release the surety.
Second.
First and second all in favor.
Aye.
Cars three zero.
Next item is C 24006. It's 9809 Point View Drive by Bradford Development Services LLC. We've been holding 2,706 in escrow guaranteeing the entrance construction and they are, they sent a request to have the surety released and construction is complete.
Driveway has been constructed. Recommend release.
Make a motion to release.
Second. First and second all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Our last item are street construction plans. It's a primary plat 2507 for Miners Lake. Petition and owners, American Land Holdings in Indiana LLC by Bryce West VP. It's approximately 59.19 acres, north side of New Harmony Road, zero feet north of the intersection of New Harmony and Three Lakes Drive. Campbell Township, section nine and 10, five and nine, completely gone file, and they're requesting no improvements to New Harmony Road.
Jim Morley Jr., project engineer. This is the same project that came in front of the drainage board a couple hours ago where it's just 13 lots, just each one with a driveway out to New Harmony Road. So we're seeking no road improvements.
Recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. First and second all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
And that's all I have for the air plans motion.
Thanks. So items for discussion, engagement letter with Baker Tilly Advisory Group, New Highway Garage.
This was at the last meeting and we tabled it because Bobby was going to check and see exactly what the scope of services were, and it appears that it is to look at different funding possibilities and the total amount of the contracts not to exceed 25,000.
For the original scope A, I believe.
I thought it was all three.
I believe we'd asked. Nick?
Nick Serrano.
Nick?
Nick?
Nick was going to get back with us. I thought on some things. I'd sent some emails out.
Can I ask a question here? So Project Partners is engaged on this same project as owners representatives. Is Baker Tilly duplicative of part of your scope work? I know you probably don't have your agreement right in front of you right now.
I'm Byron Sanders. Project Partnerships, we had not identified that we would need any kind of outside advice or counsel regarding to funding options, even though we had mentioned, we had said that providing funding options would be part of our work. We looked at low-cost loans with Old National Bank. We've looked at some different strategies, you know, BOT, build, operate, transfer. In the last steering committee meeting, we were talking about those options and Nick took it upon himself to say that he would get in touch with Baker Tilly and ask them to give advice on the best ways to fund this project.
Okay.
Did you get a chance to look at what that engagement letter would entail?
No.
Love some $25,000.
Table last meeting.
It's in the proposal they gave us. Everybody has a copy and had a copy last meeting.
I've read it. It's 25,000 for them to perform a study to figure out how we pay, how we finance it.
I don't know why we need to pay $25,000 for that. We know how we would pay for it. We know what our options would be to pay for it.
Well, it's charging 25,000 as well.
That's what their agreement is.
To do it, up to 25,000.
So will they bill it on time and material then?
Um, yes, yes.
Hourly.
Hourly, not to exceed, plus expenses.
I mean, this is a large project, so typically, unless, you said, you know what kind of funding the council wants to do on this?
No, that's not what I said. I said, we know what our options would be. That's why I wanted to know what the letter said, and I haven't seen it, obviously. We can bond it. We can do a little interest loan. If that's all they're going to tell us, if they're going to do a pro forma to go along with those samples, then that's a little bit different story, but I haven't seen that.
There's two, two scopes of work. One is the general municipal advisory services and the other securities issuance, and I don't think we would do that until we knew if we were going to move forward. But looking at the general municipal advisory services, they do go into quite depth, general financial advice, resources, development of a plan, including alternative approaches, assist the client selecting the approach, advise the client on current market conditions, financial impacts to federal, state, or local, and other general information, identify other professional services that may be necessary to finish the project, assist client in coordinating the activities of the working group for the project, assist with a review of documents provided that are relevant to the development of a plan and alternative approach, assist the client with other components of the project as requested and agreed upon. That's in scope A.
That's, that's what I thought it was, but that's not what the headline sounded like.
And we did a feasibility analysis of this project's site conditions and such as that, and that was funded through ARPA. Is there any money, where would the $25,000 come from?
Good question.
Because it's not in, we've spent the money that the ARPA funds gave us. We stopped spending on that project.
Yeah. Okay, my, my question has been answered with Debbie's description. Thank you.
So the question now is, are we committing the 25,000?
So of course on funding, an option would be to pass or to agree to enter into this contract subject to council approval. That's one option you could do.
You mentioned the bond issuance. Was that delineated in the price? $25,000 for the general municipal advisor.
No, so the securities issuance was separate.
Okay.
So the scope would be a not to exceed amount of 25,000 is the way I understand it on a time.
That makes sense.
An expense basis. I don't know that the first would be the whole 25.
So I'm okay with the agreement. As long as the council agrees.
Yeah, depending on approval and funding of the council. Okay, you made that motion.
I will make that motion.
I have a second. So we have first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Where would you like to take it from?
That's a council question.
Yep.
Pardon me?
That's a council question.
Appropriation.
Okay, you'll have to be an additional.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, Health Department Board Member Appointment. We forgot a message today to table that again as I continue the search.
Yes, we have someone in mind and they have reached out to that physician and are waiting to hear back.
Motion to table.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. 911 update.
Sheriff Mike Wilder. Just kind of a quick update. As you guys appointed a 911 committee to see if 911, the dispatch PSAP centers and standard of the sheriff become its own entity is when we move into our facility, we have met on two or three occasions now and we have not came to a total decision. We do that recommendation we brought before you. We're making a few more decisions, but we are wanting to move rather fast with this, rather whatever which way we lean and give you his recommendations because that time will be here sooner than later. So I just could take any quick questions if you had any, but I would say right now we're probably leaning towards it to be its own entity for several reasons, but if there's any questions, we'll probably be for you with, I'd say by next month with a actual recommendation.
I don't have any questions. I'm obviously on the committee, so I'm well informed.
The biggest thing is budgeting for the council, but it really doesn't matter if it stays under the sheriff or stays as its own entity because we're going to be in separate buildings and it's the budgeting, kind of, we're working on that with the county council administrator and stuff too for that, so we can get it, make sure no matter what we do, steps forward that it's properly funded and that building and things like that. Some of those decisions that will have to be helped, you know, obviously what goes in that building with dispatch, so.
I'll talk a little bit about maybe the director position, you know.
Yeah, so the biggest thing is a director. We, you know, we're talking as a committee, what will be, who will be over that? If it stays under the sheriff's office, currently obviously as the sheriff, I'm over dispatch with my chief deputies, the immediate supervisor. With us not being in that building, that facility, we would probably point lieutenant or major to move out to be in that building at all times. The council in our current budget, in the budget year we're in, gave me money to appoint a director, so that would either be that non-director would be a merit employee under the sheriff, or if we start to lean to go to its own entity, that director will be hired by a board and will work under that board and work for the county, but won't be under the sheriff's office. So that's kind of one of the reasons why we need to kind of decide that sooner than later. So that director regardless, we want them to be able to sit down, be able to work dispatch, be able to do everything that the dispatcher can do, but also be a supervisor and have some experience. So getting the right person, because as we move out of that facility, it's very hard. We, myself or the chief, you know, we're talking to those employees daily. Problems come to us, so that director needs to be with them and in that building or that, whether it's director or one of our American employees needs to be in that building with them when we move out at all times.
Safe to say, some of the committees here, I think the general consensus of the committee is that it'd be really nice to get that person hired now, but can't really do that until we know whether the commissioners are going to form a 911 board or not based on the recommendation that the committee did.
Yeah, so that's what we're going to wait on and stuff, but as I would, I would like just to make sure, point out, and I don't know if there's any council members in the audience or not, but it's already budgeted. That person is even for this year, it's in this 25 budget and then put into the 26 budget too. So financially, we don't see a major, no matter which avenue we go, costing the county any money per se, but we still need to get it lined out and kind of move forward because as we know, it's already August and September's right around the corner. So anyways, we'll probably be in front of you with that recommendations in the next meeting or maybe September meeting. But if there was any questions, if you had before we had our final meeting, I just wanted to be able to give you guys that opportunity. So anything else, you can reach out. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Next up is Health Department Administrator update.
Hello, Dr. Kari, Health Officer for Ward County Health Department. We just wanted to come and give you guys a little update. We have two positions that are currently open in our office. One is public health nurse and one is an environmental septic person. Both of these got posted Wednesday internally and were posted for three days and then went externally today. Since the public health nurse is paid out of the HFI fund from the state, we do have to post that position for 30 days publicly before we can start doing any kind of interviews for the public health nurse position. So that one will be open for a little bit longer than hopefully the environmental and septic position. And then also today, after receiving several complaints on Friday afternoon and today about the McDonald's in Boonville, our food inspectors did go out today and did shut down the McDonald's in Boonville due to multiple different health concerns. They did go back this afternoon to check on them and it unfortunately is not any better, so they will be shut down for two to three days while they hopefully clean and spray for bug infestations.
Okay. All right. You have questions?
Not to my list.
Okay, any questions?
That's excellent.
No.
Dr. Kari, one thing, did you want to review this and have them sign it? The tricap MOU?
We'll do that later on this week.
They have to sign it?
Yes.
Okay.
But we're having a meeting with the state later on this week.
All right, just want to make sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up is the proposal from Keller Schrader.
So Terry asked me to put that on the agenda and you have the proposal in your packet. It has been reviewed by the attorney and a service agreement has been added to it. I did not send it to Keller Schrader yet until it was approved by the commissioners.
Like it's been hanging out there since March. That's a variety of services that we need them to provide us. I don't think they've stopped, but it needs to be done.
Terry, what is VMware? What does that mean?
Virtual management of computers.
Is that, and that's for the sheriff's office or for all of us?
I think it's just, I think it's just for our, our side, the county side. I'd have to actually look at it. The sheriff usually brings us his.
Obviously.
Yeah, it's not here.
The contract is a total of $15,330 and 24 cents.
That's for three years, right Debbie?
Right, and then 5,11008 for their subscription and then the, they're both subscription, I'm assuming.
It's a total.
It's total.
Yeah, so it looks like.
Yes, it's 5,101.
And that's what we pay, is it annually?
Annually, yes.
And this is a renewal?
It is a renewal. I'm not sure if the price increased from last time or not.
Terry, is that for everybody? Is that for the sheriff as well because their names?
I think it's just for our side of the house.
It's got, prepared for the Ward County Sheriff's Department.
That's why I was asking. It was for the sheriff.
Yep, there's some work in that new building, I believe.
So that's part of this?
Yep.
So does the whole county?
No, it shouldn't be. Some of it should come from the bond, shouldn't it?
I don't know how, let me see here. How it's laid out.
It doesn't always say in the.
Oh, this is absolutely. This is not, this is not the SMAS renewal.
That's what you gave me.
This is, this is the VMware renewal for the sheriff's department. Let's table this. We've got our documents mixed up. I'll make a motion to table.
Okay.
Second.
All right, first and second all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Zero. Do you have that, the correct one to give?
Probably.
All right, project partnership, a couple of things. First up, service agreement for Merestream Environmental.
Cover both of them. I'm Byron Sanders from Project Partnerships. I've got a couple of a service agreement and a contract amendment that I want to put in front of you. I'll give this to Debbie and she can pass it. This is a servicer, this is a service agreement from Merestem Environmental. On the county highway project, before we got too far down the path on that project, we wanted to do a feasibility study, so we, we use ARPA funds to do soil testing, phase one environmentals. We use Morley and Associates, do schematic drawing to see good cost, survey the site and identify boundaries, setbacks, and so on. We hired Merestem Environmental. We've used them on the jail project and other projects related to the fact that anytime there's a stream or a water discharging into a bigger stream, it could fall under the jurisdiction of the Corps of Engineers, and we have to make those determinations because all of that affects permitting. As we were going through the project, and by the way, we got, there was no issues with the phase one environmental and the geotech assessments. The schematic drawings were completed and we've got cost estimates based on those. We did the site survey. There were two wetland areas identified and there was a stream bordering the property that was shown on the drawings. As IDM reviewed the drawings for the permitting process, they agreed with our interpretation that there was no impact to the site based on the wetlands. And, but, and they did note that the stream that was bordering the property, they would permit that, but they wanted to us to plant 20 feet linear from the stream, native grasslands to help mitigate erosion and any other type of water flow issues. They indicated that if we would do that, they would permit the project. The service agreement is for Merestem, same company that did the evaluation, that did the submittals, to do that for us and then go back to IDM and say, we've done that, show them proof of it, and then we will get the permit for that site to be built on. Whether that site is ever used for the county highway department or anything of the county, to have this behind us, knowing it's usable, you know, there's no feasibility issues, it's probably money well spent. It's for $5,300, and I think Bobby, you can probably attest to that. We, by doing this, we've saved several, maybe even hundreds of thousands of dollars because we could have been required to do mitigation issues and such as that, but I think we're coming out very favorable with this. Any additional comment, Bob?
No, I just recommend approval.
Yeah.
I already spoke to Bobby on that, yeah?
Okay.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
First and second all in favor.
I'm sorry, very quickly, the agreement that's in front of me, there's a slight typo at the top. So just whoever's going to do the final one, it needs to read Ward County, comma, Indiana, by and through its Board of Commissioners, and then define that as county and.
You see it.
And then Merestem LLC, just to define the parties, just to make sure that correction. But everything else, it is our standard service agreement.
Okay.
Excuse me, before we move forward, where are you going to take the money from?
Good point. Because we've used all the ARPA funds for the feasibility study.
I had sent emails with a few options.
Yeah.
I don't know that Q cap's going to have any money.
It has over a million dollars.
No, there wasn't.
It's in cash, in the fund.
We've had to use that money for other things that wouldn't be funded.
Okay, well, the other option is the road donation commissioner's discretionary has over 25,000 in it.
I know this is important to getting this behind us.
If you can do the same.
Contingent on.
Same thing.
I'll need to go back and discuss any of my bridge projects.
Your bridge is still in there.
For next year.
So don't worry, yes, and this year. I didn't touch that.
All right, thank you.
You want to amend your motion?
Thank you, amend the motion.
So I'll make a motion to approve pending council.
Appropriating.
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 Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The second thing that I wanted to put in front of you is an amendment to the, this is related to the security center project. Our architect on that project is RQAW located out of Indianapolis area. Their original contract for that project, approximately $50 million project, has been $2 million. We've worked on this project for two years now and have had no changes, haven't had no changes in additional design services. Something that came to my attention was the fact that RQAW's contract expired in March of this year, 2025. Project schedule and all the other contracts do not end till a year from now, in June, July. It was possibly just an oversight in some manner for RQAW to submit that contract that didn't coincide with the project's contract schedule. So we had some discussion. Nick and I negotiated with RQAW and we had them extend their contract to coincide with the larger project contract, so their work will go through the end of the project, which is very much necessary, needed, at no additional cost. At this time, they were, they brought forward some additional design services to cover everything in one amendment. They have provided some additional drawing work. We had a maintenance building planned for the site, hadn't done the detailed drawings. They are going to do those drawings for approximately $25,000. We've had to do some additional design services to comply with Indiana Department of Environmental Management, about $10,000. We've had some design services necessary as some of the interior finishes were changed. We had to do some roadway improvements and the, and some entry security gate improvements. We've had to, as we talked about earlier, we're doing some design issues related to the drainage issues on high rock. We're funding that and our project is the design only right now. And they had them do some additional site engineering, design changes based on input from Clint Roos from the. from the, as a city engineer. And those totals, I've, I've broken those down and, and I've included that in, in a summary letter. Those totals are, come to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Knowing that there are design changes will occur, and naturally, I had budgeted an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for design changes. This would use a hundred and fifty thousand of those dollars, still leaving another hundred thousand dollars if there's any additional design changes. So Nick and I have reviewed it, and I think we can recommend. I've reviewed these costs also with the other project team members, the contractors and so on, and feel these costs are very aligned. And again, we've, we didn't consider this down to something I feel is favorable for the county. So we'd like for you to consider signing and approving this amendment. It'll be a total of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, plus it will make their schedule coincide with the project schedule for completion. I'll give this amendment to.
I've got one.
You've got one copy, okay. So I propose that we would approve that.
Get it with it.
Why would they make their agreement for only, for twenty-six instead the duration of the project?
Great question.
That's odd, isn't it?
It's very odd, because I had to go back and remind him that they participated in the development of our thirty-six month schedule.
Right.
Why they put that as a twenty-five month schedule, it didn't make sense. And matter of fact, that's the logic we use to say, let's, we'll, let's make the dates coincide, but we're not going to pay you for any additional services or such as that. They, they did want additional services, compensation, but we didn't increase their services. They still need to do, you know, site visits, closeout requirements, continue review submittals and request for information. It was just a mistake, I think, on their part. And the correction is just, we want the dates to be the same, and they will continue to provide service at no cost. The only services that we're paying additional for are the ones identified. We've, we've had to make some post-design changes for site logistics issues with city engineer. We're doing some design changes for helping prove that drainage problem.
Yeah.
And so on like.
And that money already comes out of what you have, correct?
Yeah, yes, I had two fifty for additional design services. This will use one fifty.
And fifty left.
A hundred left.
Okay.
Two fifty, one fifty.
Two fifty, okay.
Yeah.
Who said you give it? Was that a motion?
Motion.
I'll second the motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye. Thanks Byron.
Thank you Byron.
Okay, so I think everybody now has the correct SMS renewal. I sent it to your phone. Cliff, you have it? Back up to.
Right, so I'll read Guy, his original comments. The SMS is time we pay for Keller Trader to make our servers, make sure our servers and V backup systems stay current. So that would be firmware software upgrades, just general maintenance type stuff, and continue to operate as needed. Maintenance is essential for day-to-day business to continue. So that, that came to us originally on May. And it is for a total of.
Twenty-three, four seventy-two.
There we go.
It's one thousand, nine fifty-six per month, for a total of twenty-three, four seventy-two.
How have we been paying that now?
I think we are already paying this.
I know. So do we have the funding going forward for it?
Correct. I think we've already made a couple of payments of this amount without the contract. I just put it under services and charges. I'll put it in there. You can put it under contract services.
Okay, okay.
So what's the KS services? It looks separate for one thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Say that again.
That under proposed summary, that first, where it says KS services, one thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. That's separate than the monthly recurring summary.
Commissioners assumptions.
Treelix, Treelix onboarding? That's what it appears to be to me, but I don't know what that is.
I don't know what that is either.
I see that, but I don't know what that is either. Do you, Terry?
What are you looking at, Cliff? What's, what's your proposal number?
It's this one, professional services, two and N. Page six. This is approved, onboarding. Debbie, do you know what that is?
Unless it's a renewal fee.
It's a times six. It's some, it's a hundred and ninety-three dollars times six.
Oh, the total of the twelve months is twenty-three thousand, four seventy-two, if you take the one, nine, five, six times twelve.
Right, that's a def, different.
Yeah, there's two different things we're talking about.
I mean, you, you know you need the monthly costs, is from what I hear, so what you could do.
What is this?
The Treelix is the endpoint management. Is, I'm sorry? Treelix is the endpoint management, that will manage the endpoints of our computers so Guy doesn't have to run around all over the county checking computers. He could firmware upgrade them, software upgrade them, do that type of work remotely.
But what are we getting, a hundred and ninety-three times six?
That's onboarding. It's a new system. It's onboarding. T and M's time and materials.
So the total amounts could be more than the twenty-three, right?
That's correct.
Because taking the monthly is the twenty-three.
Right, as I read it, it's the twenty-three plus.
So this, this looks like somebody, they will provide the same engineering staff to the greatest extent possible. So under this. On-site. So is this, is this six hours at a hundred and ninety-three?
The grand total is twenty-three, four seventy-two.
Twenty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-two.
I guess I want to know, I mean, are we?
Is that a three-year period like the other one? It's a year?
Because it's monthly.
It's not, oh.
It's nineteen, monthly.
So you think the one, one, five eights in the twenty-three?
That's what it looks like to me.
I don't know. I, I kind of do.
I didn't, I didn't think it was.
I think we should table it till we can look at it better.
It's fine.
Yeah, just to know what that, that component is.
Okay, can we sort of consider that discussion, council? We don't need any further motions. It's already tabled.
Correct.
All right. Next up, EMA, permission to submit.
Matthew Gable, EMA Director. The SHSP grant is back again with, it's going to need to be a quick turnaround. I'm going for two things. Active shooter for a week-long training for all of our first responders. Myself, Chief Byers, and Deputy Chief Baxter went up to one in La Porte. It's the same one. Having that come down here to our county is going to better benefit all of our first responders because you all have to work together and also bring in other counties as well. Second one with that, I was approached by one of the deputies with the Sheriff's Department with a really good idea for all of our police departments here in the county with a simulator. That they can do active shooter training on there, any kind of training. With all of that, that's, it's a big thing with me, so I'm going to try to help them as well. So we have two different things that we're going to put in for. I have to see if we can get one. You can't do both, which I wish you could. The grant's for a hundred and fifty thousand. So hopefully we, we get one of those again. That'd be three years in a row for us, so hopefully we get that. Last one, I was reached out by the town of Newburgh, the fire department and the police department, asking if they, we have any grants for boats, which is the port security grant. So I started that. That is for the town of Newburgh. So if I do it, the county will own that, so I don't know how you guys feel about that, so. One's your comment.
You'd have to have an agree, if you, if you're applying for it on behalf of Warwick County, that boat would belong to, to Warwick County. There would probably have to be some kind of interlocal agreement to allow Newburgh to use it?
Yes. Is, is it going to be something left with the town of Newburgh, or are you going to just manage it like you'd manage the mobile command, for example?
It would be placed in the firehouse. It would be used for them. I was just making sure that it's okay with you guys, since it is a town of Newburgh and not a county one.
Can they apply for it?
Yes, they can. The town of Newburgh can.
I don't think it would be Newburgh's if we, we applied. I think that'd be cleaner if the town applied for it.
And maybe you could assist them if they need help with the process.
Whatever you choose to do.
All right, it's fine. What's your guys'?
You got four days. Get the boat.
Yeah. I will, I'll talk with the chiefs and, and see, and then if not, I'll, I'll help them with the town. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Matt.
While you're there, Matt.
We need to approve that submission of one and then the other. Did we do that?
For the grant?
I said, did we? It's a grant.
Yeah, because there were two, right? So do we want to make a motion to approve the first?
I'll make a motion to approve the application for the SHSP grant.
I'll second the motion.
So first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then for the port securities grant, we're going to make no action on that. You'll take that back?
Yeah, I'll take it back to the chiefs and the town manager.
I mean, I think, you know, the application deadline's in four days. Consensus to say we're all okay with that. At least he's made us aware of it, which is the intent of the policy. And then we can, we can ratify that later if, if he ends up having to actually apply.
It says, with these grants, even with the SHSP, they have now turned quick turnarounds. And this is the shortest I've seen for one of these grants, so. It just came out last week.
It's crazy.
Yeah.
So I think, I think, I think you got everything you need.
Okay. Don't leave yet.
Yeah. I won't.
All right, so Matt, I have before me a signed proclamation declaring August twenty twenty-five as Emergency Management Month in Warwick County. I'll read the proclamation, whereas the safety and well-being of Warwick County residents is of the highest importance and being prepared for natural and man-made disasters is essential to protecting lives, property, and community resources, and whereas emergency management plays a vital role in coordinating preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation efforts during times of crisis. And whereas Warwick County Emergency Management Agency and other first responders work tirelessly year-round to ensure the county is ready to respond to emergencies of all kinds. And whereas Emergency Management Month provides an opportunity to raise public awareness about the importance of inerrancy planning, encourage, and encourage individuals, families, and businesses to take steps to be prepared. And whereas proactive emergency management not only saves lives, but also strengthens the resilience and recovery of our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Warwick County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim August twenty twenty-five as Emergency Management Month in Warwick County, and encourages all residents to recognize the importance of emergency preparedness and support the efforts of the emergency management professionals. And thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item there is going to be tabled. They're not ready to come before the Commissioners.
That was the, the Peabody?
Yeah.
Okay.
Bobby and I visited with them last Thursday, and they've presented me with an email, but I feel like you need to look that over, so yes. And I think there's some issues that Bobby would like to have the time to sit down with you both about before it's decided, correct?
Yes.
Yes. So.
Okay.
Make a motion to table?
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Kerry's three zero. Lucind to Taylor.
She says, somebody else get up there.
And he's in on this too. I think we finally came to an agreement.
Oh, good. It's good to see you again.
Very easy. I was overstepping my bounds. They were right. I shouldn't have gone as far down into Castle area as I did. So they suggested Jenna Road was a cutoff and crossover there, two sixty-one. Go Anderson Road to the four-way stop, left past Friedman Park, Raider Road, and then all of Yankee Town Road. I say highways, it was very cool. So.
Yeah, I, I only think I'd add is, if we do that, I'd like to incorporate a little bit of Lake Ridge, and then on the other side, go down Pike Road a little bit to, I think it's Shamrock. We do have a lot of people that still do drive their golf carts. Some just cross the street there off Shamrock and different things into Rolling Hills Country Club, so that would incorporate them too and keep them legal.
So we're adding golf carts too, too? I'm fine with that.
Yeah, that's, I would like to see that.
I'm okay with that. We did that in Chandler too, when we opened up Chandler, so we just incorporated golf carts with us. So. The, I would like to stay with the same thing that we had beforehand, as far as helmets. Eighteen-years-old is driver, have to have a driver's license, insurance, headlights, taillights. We, I don't think we need a flag anymore. And dusk to dawn is our hours. So. Anything else?
No, just, you know, we haven't had any issues, you know, the northern part where this had been passed. You know, everything's a little trial, you know, I think some people get a little nervous, think it's going to be like the Wild West, people running. But that's not what we've seen. Mostly responsible adults. Like, as I get with the golf carts in that area, if anybody's down that area, we have a lot of golf carts that go over to Rolling Hills. You know, I'd get them legal. They're only on those county roads from their house to there. So this is kind of very common, Boogal City, Chandler, a lot of them have passed something very similar. We're not letting them out state roads, we're not letting them out under our major roads. It's still on the smaller county roads for the speed.
Vanderburg County, yeah.
Yeah, our last, you know.
Gibson County, Spencer County. When we originally did it, we took everything, we went with, took what Spencer County had, Pike County had, and Gibson County had, and that's what we incorporated towards our first one fifteen years ago. And then now it's changed and Vanderburg County's opened up, and, you know, so it's totally different.
Bobby, do you have anything to add?
No. Counsel.
Yeah, I just need to look into how we effectuate that, so.
Look into what?
How we actually accomplish that legally.
Okay.
So.
I didn't know whether you could just do an amendment or write her on the other one, or?
Uh, we may be able to, yeah, so.
Because people's asking me when we're going to be able to open them up.
Yeah, so, so what I can do is I can work with Sheriff and Bobby Howard to put something in writing, and then they can reach out to you, see if you have any comments, questions, and then we can bring it to a Commissioner meeting.
Okay, all righty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Purdue Extension Office report.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Joe Gilry from the Extension Office. Debbie's put in front of you our paper copy of our last quarterly report. You'll kind of just see a little summary of the main activity with the Extension Educators in Office, 4H Youth Development. Spent a lot of time working with teen mental health first aid, facilitating positive youth development science programs, teaching Mindful Me curriculum to local elementary schools. Did training for 4H camp counselors, who then planned and implemented the annual 4H camp. STEM lessons were taught at Chandler Elementary. And for the ag and natural resources, that position is currently vacant. However, we are receiving services for callers in our county from the surrounding county ag and natural resource educators. Our office did coordinate registration for the Conservation Crusaders program. And the Vanderburg, the Vanderburg County Urban Ag Extension Educator is serving in the role of the Master Gardener Coordinator. Health and Human Sciences activity included monthly parent forever classes, reaching a hundred and twenty-two adults. We began a partnership with the Health Department to look at delivering dining with diabetes and Matter of Balance classes using the HFI funds. Classes were taught related to cooking, food safety, knife skills, and a three-part series with the Alzheimer's Association for caregiver support. We continue to provide leadership to the local Warwick County Cares Coalition, advising, advisement to the local homemaker organization, and assist with fair committee planning. As you know, July was County Fair Month, so we had lots of activity throughout our office supporting that event. Any questions you have for us at this time?
I don't think so. Thanks for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Next, approval of the minutes from the July twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. First, three zero. County Administrator.
Yes, I'll start with the items under the consent agenda. The first is a payroll voucher, number sixteen, an amount of six hundred and ninety-three thousand, twenty-six dollars and seven cents. You want to take individual votes, or do you want me to read them? It's up to you. Do you want to take individual votes, or do you want me to read them? It's up to you. Okay. Next is accounts payable voucher dated August 11th, 2025 for three million, four hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-five cents. The next is the approval of a non-certified claim to Old National Bank in the amount of seventeen thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and forty-six cents. And I can tell you that was the credit card from May that did not get paid. And there were three charges I haven't been able to find receipts for, but I'm still working on those.
They were a total of? Was it nine hundred?
Yeah, well, nine hundred.
One was like a couple dollars to the post office.
Now, the two from last month, I did find the receipts and turned them in to the auditor, so those are all accounted for. This was two rooms at the Doubletree and one Indiana Gov. for nine hundred dollars, and I'm still looking for those receipts.
Okay.
It was someone that went to a conference, and they may have given them to Dana, but I, I can't find them. So I'm still looking into that.
Okay.
The last is approval of Regal Pay Estimate number four, which was inadvertently left off the agenda, I think, two meetings ago, in the total amount of two hundred forty-one thousand, seventy-nine dollars and nineteen cents. And that's the end of the consent agenda.
So just for public clarification, back up to that non-certified claims. This was a, a, every, that was the entire credit card bill for the month.
For the month of May, for everyone.
For everyone, but there were three.
Three receipts that I could not locate.
Correct. None of it could, even all, even though all the other receipts are there, none of it could be certified by the doctor.
Correct. But it was passed due by like three months, so we tried to get it together.
I just didn't, I didn't want the, the thought that we were.
We're still looking for those.
That we were just ran away approving seventeen thousand dollars. We're not.
Bobby, what's the Regal project?
Oh, that was, um, the, um.
The bridge on.
Page one forty?
One forty-eight on Steam's station road.
Yep, that's what I thought. Thank you.
We already did five.
Okay.
We already did a consensus on that.
Yes, that's why it's under consent agenda. Correct.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Here's three zero.
Okay, moving to regular business, um, asking for approval of the grant contracts that you awarded last meeting to Lambian Center Youth First and Junior Achievement of Southwest Indiana. This is coming from the opioid restricted grant fund. Uh, they're each for twenty-five thousand. And I have the contracts drawn up and, uh, sent to the, the, each of the nonprofits. I've gotten one of them back fully executed, but I'd like to have approval for Sarah to sign those once they are received back.
Make a motion to approve.
And for Sarah to sign.
And for Sarah to sign.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is approval of the GIS Limited Use Agreement between the County and Evansville School Corporation. What is typically standard is for WTH Technology, who is our, um, GIS licensed provider. Um, I sent this request to them, Warwick, the Vanderburgh County wants the Warwick County Address Range Layer, Warwick County Point Address Layer, and Warwick County Street Center Lines. And they would like for us to temporarily share this data with them. I have at the request of WTH forwarded the GIS Limited Use Agreement by the county. It has been signed by, um, the Vanderburgh County School Corporation with their Tyler Technology Transportation Software Program. And I'm asking for the Commissioners to approve it and sign it.
Make a motion to approve. Do we need to do anything?
I, yeah, I haven't seen it before. It looks fine to me.
Okay.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Here's three zero.
And I have one last thing that did not make it to the agenda, and that's approval for the Warwick County Sheriff's Office to apply to the Warwick County Drug Free Council for grant funding in an amount of four thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents. Excuse me.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
That's all I have.
Sherry Severs, Acquisition Administrator. I have two things on the agenda tonight. The first is, uh, opening bids for the cyclical reassessment for Warwick County. And I have with me Assessor Sarah Redman. Warwick County Assessor Sarah Redman is engaged in the cyclical reassessment, annual adjustment, which commences on May first, 2026, and shall be completed by April thirtieth, 2030. All, uh, for parcels in accordance with the Department of Local Finance and Indiana statutes. Notice to bidders was published July twenty-fourth, 2025, and July thirty-first, 2025. Commissioners, in your packet, we have provided you with RFP and all required documents. Uh, we have also provided you with a bid register to help you, uh, tally the bids as we move forward. And at this time, I would like to ask Commissioners for a motion to open the bids.
Motion to open the bids.
Need a motion to open the bids?
I looked it up in that standard procedure.
Motion to open bids.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Please open the bids. Tyler Technologies?
I heard why you had a big FedEx.
So your bid is from?
It is from Tyler Technologies. You may recognize the name as their, our current head.
Yes.
We did receive, uh, two other inquiries on the proposals, but I never heard back after sending them the requirements. So really, I mean, this is an excessive amount of information to review. And I would like to table it to the next meeting to make sure that everything's in order. If that would be okay?
Yes. So we would like to recommend to the, uh, Commissioners to give Sarah Redman, the County Assessor, to take this under advisement to ensure that all paperwork is in order and get back to you at the next meeting, uh, with her recommendation. Also, my understanding is the contract will be on, uh, the prescribed, uh, form five-five-nine-three-zero. Is that correct? Same as you did last time? Which would need, uh, signature from the Assessor and the Commissioners.
That is correct. So we need a motion to, I heard to take it.
Take it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sorry.
We're digging. We're digging for the amount to, in case you guys want that documented. Look at page eleven.
Let's see if that's in page eleven.
No, no.
Okay, so we have this for four years. To keep that in mind, please. Two, three, four, Commissioners. Put these fast enough. There you go. Let's breaking it down by the years. So the total here is.
Yep. So the total, and that's, is that four years?
Four years.
Uh, would be seven hundred eighty-six thousand, three hundred dollars.
It's quite a bit to review, so we'll go through it all and make sure that it needs all of the requirements.
And then will you look in what, how that compares to your last contract with them?
Absolutely.
I mean.
It's obviously a slight increase.
Everything.
Everything is a slight increase. Which is, it's actually quite less than I expected, so. Any questions?
Wouldn't know what to ask right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah.
Uh, the next thing on my agenda is update of traffic control contract in open negotiations. At the last Commissioners meeting, it was decided to reject all bids for the annual traffic control maintenance contract. The Commissioners at that time authorized Bobby Howard to negotiate directly with Regal in the open market. Bobby has been collaborating effectively with Regal and has suggested a proposed annual amount of thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred, which appears to be a reasonable amount. Additionally, he has verified that Regal does hold the necessary NDOT certifications that are satisfying the requirements set forth in our initial RFP. I would now like to invite Bobby to provide any additional insights that you wish to share.
Basically, in, in speaking with them and what we were doing with mounts in previous years, uh, this is slightly higher than, than mounts. But it also includes a lot of, uh, making sure that every month the, we are having each signal evaluated at least once a year. So each, so we've got, what, nine this year?
Nine intersections.
Yeah. So I think that this was a, a, uh, good price for us. And, uh, there is emergencies that come up, that will be added on top of this. This is the annual price as when they originally bid. I think they were a hundred ninety-eight thousand or something. So, so I think we've, we're at a lot better price now.
Okay.
So I'd recommend approval.
Thank you, Bobby.
Yeah, praise.
Bobby, send out your budget.
Yeah, it will be. You probably had some CCD involved in the past, but I will say.
She just needs a sign that says how we're. I will second Terry's motion to approve. First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Leave that contract with Debbie, and I would like, uh, in closing, just to note that we've got the contract available here, but the amount does not include emergency services. Those will be billed at an hourly rate plus material plus sixteen point five percent. And it's all shown in Exhibit A of the contract. Thank you, Commissioners.
Bobby, you're up.
Right, the first item I have is the request for no parking signs. The gas station at Grim and sixty-six and Orthopedic Drive on the south side of sixty-six, at Grim Road. It's fairly new. They put the light back up recently. The Orthopedic Drive goes to the west, and I have some photos. The, the owner is concerned that tractor trailers are parking there, leaving their trailer there, and it's, it's becoming a problem for access of his westernmost driveway. So he would.
Is this next to the gas station?
Yes, that's directly, yeah, that's the gas station entrance. So he's requesting that that roadway be posted no parking. And after review, I would concur and ask that if you do approve this, then we would need to, uh, have a resolution drafted to mark this roadway as no parking.
Your recommendation?
I would recommend no parking, yes.
Make a motion to, uh, approve and, uh, ask Council to draft a resolution.
Second. First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Here's three zero.
All right, the next item I stepped in, uh, was basically the drainage ordinance. Um, I believe the Drainage Board had approved the ordinance, and it had some amendments that needed to be made. Uh, once Cliff reviewed that, uh, Maury had answered a lot of those questions, and there was one section that was struck through. And you have, uh, removing, uh, criminal penalties, I believe, was, was, was in that ordinance. So that has been removed, and you have the new agenda, or the new, um, ordinance in front of you now.
I agree.
Okay. Make a motion to approve.
Second. Been worked on for.
So twenty twenty-five.
Quite a while.
Yeah. So. First, second, all in favor?
Number.
Twenty twenty-five, eleven.
Eleven.
Share.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Any question?
Uh, no.
Terry?
Okay.
Tracy?
No.
Comments from the public? First, we have Marla Decker. Sorry.
Marla.
Marla.
Come on up.
I'm sorry. I'm, don't be sorry. I have a question.
Ma'am, could you, can you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Marilyn Decker. My name, I can say her own number. I'm kidding. My name is Put and Take. Put and Take. I've always wanted to say that. I'm sorry. I, uh, wanna know why I'm having to give up my animal, and I found such a relief to go to the animal control that they would help me. I couldn't find help anywhere else. Tom has been my companion. I lived alone for seven years. He's afraid he can't. They were going to take care of him. I was so impressed when I went out there and found out how wonderful they are out there. What a great program they could have if they weren't hampered so much. I was so impressed that I made a personal donation to them. With all the money I hear around here, fifteen hundred dollars doesn't sound like much, but I felt that it would help. My Tom and any other cat, and I was so impressed with them. I, I think that donation money should not be mixed in with taxes. It's not a tax. It's my money to give to who I want to. Tax money is for you to give to who you want to. My money, they never got.
So after talking with you on Friday and going back through all the fees and then talking to, uh, the attorney, we found that donation fees, donations were going in with the regular fees, and that's. But we are separating those. We're going back to January. We've set up a fund. And we'll have to, at the next Commissioners meeting, approve the donations that have been received to date and move those to a donation fund, which has to be appropriated. And I've calculated, it's like thirty-five hundred dollars or something total. Might be a little more, so I don't want to be held to that. And then in the future, as they get donations, they will get them approved by the Commissioners and will move them to the donation fund to be, uh, appropriated for whatever purpose they were given for.
Is there any extra money to help them grow? Those people are doing a wonderful job.
We agree.
They are.
We agree that they are.
Okay. And I will continue to donate. I am going to a home that does not allow animals. And I'm so grateful for you that can help them because animals has lives too. I don't have any family. I'm the last of my family on both sides. I'm by myself, and I didn't want to die in my house and have Tom have to eat me for food. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, yeah.
I think several people are here to speak, um, on, on behalf of Animal Control. And so I, I just want to take this moment to say that this Board of Commissioners fully supports, um, all of the efforts at Animal Control. We know that they are doing, uh, an amazing job. Um, we have worked very hard, I think, since, um, the beginning of this term to work with them to make sure that they have the support that they need, that we can provide to them. So I just, I kind of wanted to, to speak for all of us and say that we, we agree they're doing fantastic things, um, especially with some of the limitations that they have.
I'd like to. I'd, I'd like to add to that. Just, just one second. I one hundred percent agree with Sarah. The Animal Control Facility does have full support of the Commissioners. However, the Commissioners don't control the money. The County Council does. And so we're gonna hear what you all have to say this evening. But, um, and I'm just gonna state my own personal opinion here. Our Animal Control Department has never been funded properly, and it needs to be funded properly. And, um, I think you folks are here maybe to lobby us tonight, and you, you need to lobby the County Council as well because we support the Animal Control Department. However, we, we don't control the money. So that's just my two cents.
Yes, actually, a couple of months ago, um, we went with Animal Control to the County Council to speak on their behalf, to let them know where funding stood at that time, um, and to kind of forewarn that they were going to need additional funding. Um, so that support is definitely there from us, and that's, at this point, really, all we can do is, is give the support and speak on their behalf, as you guys will as well. But when it comes to giving that money, that's the, the County Council, and their meetings are the first Tuesday of the month at
At six.
At six o'clock. Debbie.
Debbie Neal, and I too was here in regard to Animal Control, and I very much appreciate your opinion. And I do commend them on the work that they've done. They've worked so hard out there. I personally have adopted from out there, and I really appreciate that they've. and I really appreciate that they started a foster program and anything they can. If there's anything that the public can do that you could say other than going to county council? And since Pat Brooks is here, and she is on the county council, Pat, I would ask you to also consider anything that you could do to help Animal Control, and we would really appreciate it. They are doing a wonderful job, and I commend Monica for all of her hard work. So, if there's anything that the public could do, if you could let us know, we'd be happy. There's a lot of us that support what they are doing.
We appreciate you guys coming tonight to show that.
All right, thank you.
Debbie, now that we have a donation fund, we can accept those and put those into that fund. Much more is needed, but at least we can, we will have to go to county council to appropriate the donations, but I don't think they'll...
That money would go in their donation basket.
Yes.
Yes. That's great that you can, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And I know that Monica has worked diligently on that budget to watch what she's spending, and I can tell you, we've all looked at it, and there are no corners to cut at this point. They are providing the best care that the money that they have allows for those animals, and we'll continue to support Monica in doing great things.
As an example, and just, no, I don't want to make this five-hour-long meeting, but she's buying food in bulk with discounts on top of the bulk purchasing. She's doing absolutely everything she can to buy things efficiently. I think a lot of folks in the audience know that.
Yep.
She does get a lot of donations, and she gets savings from local animal hospitals give her large discounts.
Karen Barnhill. I'm a resident of Warwick County, Boonville. I, too, want to support Animal Control. I want to make the statement that Monica does do an awesome job. She cares. She cares about her job. She cares about the animals, as do all of us. So, they do need to be taken care of. It is a no-kill, so you've got to remember that, that we've got to be able to fund to get those puppies and those cats out to someplace. In addition, I would like for you to do another audit of the numbers that you came up with. I think Monica has a different number. It's more in the lines of like $20,000. So, if you could do another audit from January to August?
The donations, you mean? Yeah, I just, what I was looking, I should have said, was from May to now.
Well, I wish you would go back to...
Well, we're going back. I haven't gotten those. I will.
Okay, all right. Because I would like to make sure that all of those funds go back to her.
It absolutely will.
So that she can use them adequately. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Beth? Is there a Beth? It looks like it says Seaton, but... Dr. Malby? The one and only.
Now, you've pretty much answered most of my questions. I do have one question. I'll state my name. I'm John Malby, the veterinarian that's under contract for Animal Control, so I do have a vested interest. But did the council give a reason why they did not fund Animal Control's budget?
So, maybe, Terry, you can speak back to how this was separated out to begin with.
I can't speak for the council, but our Animal Control has been in a circle of chaos the last few years. I don't think...
I've been a part of that chaos, too.
And no part, and no, and no part of the staff there.
Right.
It was previously under the Health Department.
It used to be under the Health Department.
It was under the Health Department.
The commissioners took it away from the Health Department, so to speak.
Yeah.
And when it came time to budget, we actually sat down and had a big stakeholder meeting and kind of figured out how we had ideas about funding Animal Control, and I'm just going to paraphrase here. It really never happened. They crammed some extra dollars into the commissioners' budget. We've been paying for Animal Control out of the commissioners' budget, which is not only not enough money, but it has caused the commissioners' budget to go lower than it should be.
Yeah, every time she says, "Where's the money coming from?", it's because we're trying to funnel as much to Animal Control as we can, yeah.
So, we need to know, you know. When everybody goes to lobby the council, they need to, you know, ask kind of what their philosophies are about funding Animal Control, and where are they getting their ideas, and let's get this figured out.
Are they thinking, well, I'll talk to them, I guess. You know, going back to the way it was 2015 years ago, which wasn't very good, that the animals went there to die, for lack of a better term, and the previous, you know, person that was there, I won't mention her name, turned that around. Monica is doing a wonderful job. She is now making it a no-kill shelter. She got a certificate from, what is that organization?
Best Friends.
Best Friends, as a no-kill, as a no-kill shelter for the first time. And that's unheard of for a municipal animal control facility. Absolutely unheard of. So, you ought to be very proud of what's been going on.
We are. We are. Very proud.
Warwick County should set examples.
Yep.
The only other, you know, warning I have, you know, don't try to put a shelter overlay on top of Animal Control. That's what happened to the previous situation that caused all that chaos. Make sure that you, you know, and I think Monica's been doing an excellent job. You come alongside to your other shelters and rescues that come along and let them do that part, and then let Animal Control do their part.
I agree, because Animal Control is more than just housing cats and dogs.
Right.
And so, we have to make sure that the funds are there and the ability is there to meet all of the public health needs when it comes to Animal Control.
Yes.
Not just puppies and cats.
But, you know, I'm just saying, you know, the previous person had their rescue group on top of Animal Control, and then there was a complete chaos, as you would use your term, as to who funded what. Nobody had any idea.
I do feel like, I do feel like a nonprofit could play a role much in the way that the, I'm not even sure what the proper name of it is.
What will happen, Terry, is that you're going to get into a competition as to, you know, what money goes to Animal Control, what money goes to the shelter.
We have a wonderful Humane Society. We have a wonderful Humane Society.
The Health Foundation.
I think we should work with them.
What's that, the foundation?
I don't know. I just, I just, I just...
I'm just, I'm going to get it out. When I went to Debbie's predecessor a year ago, I told her, I said, "You had what you called an overlay. That didn't work very well. You need a side-by-side program." Come along with the shelters, and I think they're doing that. We've got a lot of people like Warwick Humane Society, PAWS, ITV. They're not here, I don't think, but...
They are.
Sir? Sir?
They're pretty much a part of ours, as you said.
You know, getting the animals...
It's teamwork. You'll not do this alone.
Dr. Malby, thank you so much for all that you do. Thank you.
I do want everyone to know, we have turned in, the commissioners turned in a budget just for Animal Control to councils. So, if you can say anything, tell them that budget needs to be approved.
Okay.
All right. I'm going to ask one more time. Is there a Beth that looks like Seaton? Okay. No further comments, then? All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn?
Second.
I'm entertaining a motion.
I will second the motion.
Okay. I'm ready to turn. Thank you.
Was all my stuff just at the county council now?
So, I'll be chatting.
Unappropriated funds. It was on the schedule of balances. Not many councils appropriated any money on a CCD, have you? There was the...
I go to those council meetings, and I understand that it's going.
It's for infrastructure. The $5,300, it's for infrastructure, so I don't understand how we don't have it. And then we also have road donation.
So, it could go out of the commission's discretion.
It's road donation, maybe. The commissioners have a discretionary line item. At least $25,000. Expendence for anything that's road donation, road-related.